This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the council meeting of the Borough of Edgewood for February 16th, 2021. Mr. Zohorcheck, please call the roll.
Mr. Bright. Mr. Fuller.
Here.
Mr. Love.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Dr. Petrola. Ms. Janey.
Here.
Mr. Wainwright.
Here.
And it looks like-
Now, is the mayor here? I heard the solicitor.
Yes, Tim is here. I don't believe the mayor is here, and I don't believe our junior councilperson is present. Oops. And Justin also just- apparently I did not send out the link, or some- everybody lost the link. I will- sorry, Justin is texting me for the link now.
It was in the file with the agenda.
Okay. Okay. Sorry.
That's what you get for changing your habits.
Never do that again. Alright, so Justin will be joining us momentarily, too.
Alright, skip past the Pledge of Allegiance, move on to items from before. Mr. Zohorcheck, are there any items from before?
Thank you. I did not receive any public comment either written or electronically submitted by the 4:00 PM deadline this afternoon.
Okay. And we'll move on to approval of minutes. Did anyone have any corrections or additions to the January 19th or February 1st 2021 minutes?
John, can I just ask if there is anyone present who would like to give public comment? Just briefly?
Yeah, I can't- I can't see. So yeah, is there anyone present?
This is-
Rob?
There- yes, I have one person. Ma'am, would you like to give a comment, or are you just observing?
I'm Cassandra Fernandez. I'm just a representative of the Edgewood Foundation.
Okay.
Alright, thank you for being here. Anyone with any corrections? Hearing none. Mr. O'Donnell.
I move to approve the minutes of January 19th, 2020, regular meeting. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
All opposed? Any- anyone opposed? Hearing none. Minutes approved. Mr. O'Donnell.
I move to approve the minutes of February 1st, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Minutes approved. Authorization to pay bills. Mr. O'Donnell.
I move to authorize the payment of bills for goods and services received by the Borough, having been reviewed and approved by the General Government Committee from the General Fund in the amount of $52,534.11, and from the sewer fund in the amount of $240, for a total of $52,774.11. Mr. President, would you mind if I just gave a quick bill rundown now to get it out of the way?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Notable expenses were about $3,600 for a backhoe, $4,323 for a 2018 tax refund return- excuse me, return, and we just pushed out $22,325.77 in an NEIT payments. That's health insurance. That's what I learned tonight.
Want any questions from Mr. O'Donnell?
Nope. I'm actually-
Alright, I heard-
I got- I got- join the meeting thing, this is-
Okay, Dr. Petrola is here. I heard Mr. Fuller seconded the motion. Mr. Zohorcheck, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Is Mr. Bright here by chance?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Bright has also joined the meeting. Okay, thank you. Roll call. Mr. Bright.
Yep.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Aye.
Dr. Petrola.
Aye.
Ms. Janey.
Aye.
And Mr. Wainwright.
Aye, and the motion passes. Moving into committee reports. General Government, Mr. O'Donnell.
Okay, colleagues on council, you will note in your packet tonight, you are supplied with a copy of a draft ordinance decriminalizing the possession and use of small amounts of marijuana in the Borough of Edgewood. I would suspect that there will be some questions from you guys tonight, and we were hoping perhaps we could entertain those now.
I just want to clarify that decriminalize does not mean make legal, correct?
That's a really great question, Mr. Love, and if you'll review this ordinance, then you'll note that on the second page, indeed, we lay out the penalties for first, second, and third violations of the ordinance. So what we have done, Councilman Love, is provide a bit of guidance to our police officers regarding the preferred course of action for Edgewood Police should they encounter an individual in possession or in use of a personal amount or small amount of marijuana. I would go a step further, Mr. Love, and just let everybody on council know that while this is, in my view, an important piece of legislation, it is still superseded by state law. And anything we put in place here in Edgewood does not take the place of the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which deem marijuana to be a controlled substance to a misdemeanor, I believe, or maybe more.
Thanks.
Well, I guess my only- my primary question is for Mr. Berry, I guess, is does anything in this proposed ordinance contravene state law? Or decriminalize something that state law makes criminal?
I think the point was well taken, that this does not decriminalize marijuana. It makes it a non-traffic summary offense, and we're talking about small amounts of marijuana, less than 30 grams, and we know- we all know that, but just for the record. The answer is no. It does not supplant or usurp the state law. The state law is still the state law. Our- Edgewood Police Officers could still enforce the state law in their discretion, but it's a statement that in the Borough of Edgewood, small amounts of marijuana will be treated as a non-traffic summary offense. So that's what I said before, and that's what I say still, but it does not replace or really even affect the state law.
Okay, so I'm still not clear on this concept, because- so the state law allows police- local police officers in their discretion to enforce or not enforce that state law at, I guess, at their discretion? And this ordinance is a policy that tells our police officers how they're supposed to enforce that discretion?
That, I think, is an accurate statement. It's really a statement toward our police officers that in the Borough of Edgewood, it is the intent of Borough Council, if this ordinance passes, that small amounts of marijuana will be treated as a non-traffic summary offense.
Okay, and the Borough Code allows the boroughs to do this?
That is not in the Borough Code. That is something that we are following the lead of other municipalities that have taken similar action. And, you know, again, I think it's very important that the Chief of Police for the Borough, Chief Payne, indicated that he feels that this is something that really legitimizes what the practice is right now dealing with small amounts of marijuana. So I think that's more important than anything else.
Alright, I guess- I guess I had a lot of questions about this. If this is a policy, a police policy- we've never passed police policies by ordinance before. Why isn't it just in the book, or why can't the Chief just states, "This is how we're doing it"?
You know, I guess we could, and, you know, I really don't have any more answers for you, John, other than what I've already said. I think you're simply making a statement to the Edgewood Police Officers that you- if this ordinance passes, wanted treated this manner in the Borough of Edgewood, but they still have the discretion to enforce the state law. But I can't really say anything more than that.
And I can add a little bit to that, too, to the extent that- so if an officer were to exercise the option to enforce the non- you know, to issue a non-traffic citation to an offender of this, it'd be in the ordinance, because we would be citing them under a local ordinance violation or a local law. I don't necess- right now, if it was just a internal department policy and I were to issue a citation- I can't issue a citation against a policy. I have to issue it against a law, so that when, you know, say someone were to appeal it, it would actually go to the magistrate's office. So it has to- it has to be a local law, so that the penalty could be enforced against that violation of that local law.
I think John's point is well taken, though, and I said that, but I'll say it again. You're not changing the state law, and our officers could still enforce the state law. John's question was, why doesn't our police policy manual just advise to reflect that we're gonna treat it differently? I think- I think- I think Rob is correct, that we are putting something on the books to give them the authority to issue the non-traffic citation, but it does not supplant the state law.
What happens if somebody gets caught in Edgewood with a small amount, as defined by this ordinance, and in their discretion, the officer decides to enforce state law? Then the defendant then have the opportunity to say, "But wait, you have this ordinance that says that you can't do that," or "Your ordinance says that the penalty shall be $25 for the first time. Why are you hauling me down to the county courthouse?" I guess I'm- my policy- my problem- I don't have a- I don't- because my questions aren't policy-related. It's more procedural. I just don't understand how this fits in.
The city of Pittsburgh has also passed this ordinance, so I don't know how they're handling it, John, but, you know, it's- I would assume that for the same reasons that we're looking at it, that they did that.
But I thought kind of the entire purpose of this ordinance was to not give so much discretion to officers in these cases. I mean, what's- if the officer still has discretion to enforce state law, then what's the point?
The purpose of the- the purpose of the ordinance is to give the police department direction as to how we would like this to be enforced. It's not a command by us, but it's an indication that, as far as council is concerned, if this becomes an ordinance, we would prefer that they do this as a summary non-traffic offense.
Alright, I don't understand that, because if it's an ordinance, then it's a command. It's the law- it becomes the law of Edgewood. It's not just a policy. It's not the police saying, "I prefer you do-" you know, the police chief's saying, "You catch somebody with a small amount, maybe just, you know, dock him 25," or whatever. This is a- this is an ordinance. It means they have to- this is what will happen. I don't know. I guess I'm- maybe I'm making too much out of it. I just- procedurally, I just don't understand how this- this fits in with the Commonwealth laws on this subject, but-
So a little- John, I can speak a little bit to that, what you're talking about, in sofar as like, you know, the chief just kind of telling, or even to the level of a policy, or the chief just telling somebody, the officers, "This is how we're gonna do it." It's sort of been the law of the land for the last few years. There isn't necessarily a benchmark or a defined practice in place on how to treat these, you know, the possession of small amounts of marijuana by people. I mean, frequently, what happens now is if someone is stopped- remember, officers have- police officers under Commonwealth law have a broad discretion on how to act, but normally, we want them to enforce the law 100% of the time, but they do have discretion on how they enforce the law. More often than not, no penalty is going to be issued to someone who might be in possession of a joint. They're probably gonna take it, throw it in the trash, and say, "Move along," but there is no formal established doctrine on how that encounter should occur. So Officer B- Officer A may do what I just described, and Officer B, which the power that we have now is to write you for disorderly conduct, and disorderly conduct is kind of that catch-all violations where I don't want to necessarily ruin your life and charge you with simple possession. Simple possession is a much more severe penalty, up to the range of actually, you know, you could face serious punishment for that. Now, the policy is just to generally write you under disorderly conduct, which is a misdemeanor. So giving someone the option to not even go down the route of issuing a misdemeanor, but rather a summary offense, from what I've heard from the police department, is actually helped by almost the entire department, hands down, to say, "Okay, great, now we have a tool that we can use that says, 'Alright, you know, we don't even have to worry about confiscating marijuana. We don't have to worry about, you know, how do we write this misdemeanor up?'" We now know, okay, we have this tool, we can use it, great. So that's- that's kind of where- where past practices land, is that it's a patchwork of, "Well, how aggressively do I want to enforce this?" And then, to the extent that the violator or the actor is- warrants additional punishment, for lack of better words, there is that option to fully enforce state law, to choose that route, to charge him with simple possession. If the person's bad, if the person has other- committed other crimes, you know, it would all be- it would be a situational basis.
I'm gonna- I'm gonna ask whoever's attending the meeting at a dinner party if they could go ahead and use themselves. I'm gonna save the rest of my questions for later, because I still have many. But it's- my point is, the ordinance, as it reads, doesn't give any discretion. If you get caught with a small amount, your first penalty shall be $25. But I think it's kind of the point- I thought was the point of the ordinance, was to take that discretion out of, you know, away from the officers and just say, "This is what we're doing in Edgewood now."
No.
And now it's not just- it's not just in the policy manual, now it's an ordinance. It's not, you know, the chief- if we pass this, the chief can't change it later. I mean, this is on the books. This is- this is the highest thing we can pass.
Yeah, but it still is superseded by state law. I mean, this point about the intent of this ordinance being about limiting an officer's discretion, I think, is actually just the opposite of the intention of this. The intent of this ordinance is to codify an existing informal arrangement, I think that Rob described pretty well. Now, insofar as perhaps we ought to change that word "shall," I think that's a reasonable discussion, but the point here is that an officer can have at their discretion the option of issuing a non-traffic citation or pursuing misdemeanor as defined under state law. This, to my mind at least, and I think this is also the way a chief saw it, this gives optionality to our police officers.
Alright, well, I don't think- I'm not sure that an ordinance is the proper vehicle for this, because I don't think that gives any- I mean, I don't know what Tim thinks, but when we pass an ordinance, that's the law in Edgewood, and if it says, you know, if we're passing laws, I don't- you know what, I'll save my questions for later, so we've kind of beat the dead horse, but-
Well, I- let me-
This just seems like- if it's gonna be a policy that's kind of codifying an informal arrangement, that seems like something that goes into the policy manual that the Public Safety Committee discusses, and I don't know if an ordinance is the proper vehicle for what we're trying to do, but you know what, I'm gonna- I think I'm gonna try to move on, because I think I've asked enough questions.
I think your questions are very good, John. Please read Section 4C of the ordinance. Maybe- maybe that'll help you.
Um, before we-
It says, "This chapter shall not be construed to supersede any existing Pennsylvania or federal law. Edgewood Borough Police Officers retain the authority to enforce any applicable laws, and it is Borough Council's intent that police officers may undertake custodial arrests where there is probable cause to believe that a criminal offense, other than simple possession of small amounts of marijuana, has been or is being committed."
Okay, well, maybe we wanna just make sure that section is not contradictory to other parts of the ordinance that say that, you know, "The penalties shall be this," but that might just mean the massaging language. So, like I said, I-
Mr. President?
I'm done with questions.
Mr. President, before we go further in discussion, and I certainly- our colleagues have more questions to ask, and that's fine. I think what general government wants to do tonight, and Rob, I know, step in and help me with this if you'd like, we- I think we're gonna put a motion forward to advertise or to have a first full reading at our next committee meeting, or our next, I'm sorry, a full council meeting. Mr. Zohorcheck, where did- where did we land in our general government committee meeting?
So, yeah, Ryan is correct. So the procedure, obviously, typically, we do a first reading, and a motion to advertise on the same evening, and then we do the second and final readings at a subsequent council meetings, and adopt the ordinance. Given how this, you know, we had open debate here, it sounds like there may still be questions. You know, the- I think at this point, it sounds like maybe- and again, this would be like up to the will of council. It sounded like general government was comfortable with the language, but if there are still questions about it, I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth, but it sounds like perhaps general government could take another look at it. If there was a need to make revisions to that ordinance, now would think be the time to have that discussion. Otherwise, my suggestion is instruct me to move forward with just simply advertising the motion with the intent of adopting it at the March 15th meeting. So you would do the first reading at the first March meeting, and the second and final readings in the middle-March meeting, and at one point in time, it would be adopted, if that was council's intent.
Can we, I mean, just as far as little changes it may make a difference, and that enforcement thing is indeed like the last thing in this ordinance, could we sort of move it to the beginning and have a statement that says the purpose of this thing is to, you know, on small amounts of marijuana, you know, like have a- have something in there that's clear about what we're trying to do, and then go through and decide whether you want to say "shall" or "can," just maybe say that first, as you're reading it?
My suggestion would be if that- normally, normally when we do an ordinance, you know, there is that cover page that says, you know, "Whereas," and we list a few intentions of what. I think, as far as point, the use of that could be a fantastic vehicle- vehicle to convey the intentions of this ordinance to say, "Whereas, council wishes to, you know, I don't know, make a statement on, you know, decriminalizing marijuana or something to that. Whereas, this ordinance is not intended to supervise, you know, supersede state law. Whereas, an officer still retains the right to enforce, you know, state and federal law. Now therefore be it resolved," and then move into the ordinance. Just thinking aloud here, but that is certainly a possibility. It could be reworked if the reworking of that were to, you know, satisfy everyone. Ryan, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just saying, okay. I- listen, my personal- I didn't be in favor of moving forward with a vote tonight on whether or not we're going to advertise next week. If we do that, Rob, just for clarification's sake, or Mr. Zohorcheck, I'm sorry, for clarification's sake, would we still be allowed to make updates through the course of this week if there are questions, or if there was a subsequent email communication between council members, or are we locked into the language as it is now if we take that vote?
You're pretty much- you're locked in.
I think that we ought to try to get the ordinance fairly, pretty much intact. If you advertise an ordinance and make it available to the public, and then make material changes to that ordinance, then you have to go through the process again.
Okay. Yeah, if I move a comma or something, it's not gonna get you in trouble, but material changes, like Tim settled, that's an issue.
Well, I mean, Mr. President, that's not prerogative, but it's your council, so.
Well, I think we should- well, I guess I'd prefer that we take a couple- take a couple of weeks to- let's make sure this language is right, and then vote to advertise at the next meeting. Maybe, I don't know, maybe it's a- I guess, maybe I just need to know what the state law says on what the penalties are for a small amount of marijuana. I mean, if the state law says it can- it shall be this, that seems to contradict our ordinance, but if it says it can be anything up to this, and that's up to discretion of the police officer, you know, that's different, so.
Yeah, I mean-
John, let me answer your question, because there's no question what the state law sets. The state law still defines the small- the possession of small amounts of marijuana as a violation of a controlled substance, and the penalty for that under state law is a misdemeanor, and there's no question about that. And, you know, I thought about your question a little bit more, what you asked before, and my answer, which I gave before, is simply that this is- if this ordinance passes, this is a statement from council, that this is how you want it treated in the Borough of Edgewood. It does not in any way affect the state law, and that's-
And I guess my problem is that ordinances are not, you know, if council wants to make a statement, we can pass a resolution or something like that, but that's ordinance- if we- that's not what ordinances are for. Ordinances are the laws of Edgewood. I feel like I'm channeling Pat Schaefer here, because, you know, this is- I don't think this is the proper vehicle for this. We're not- we can't pass an ordinance that would- we state openly, nothing in it really counts. You know, it's all- if the state- if state law mandates a certain- it's already mandated a penalty for, you know, for a small amount of marijuana, I don't see how the Borough of Edgewood has the power to pass an ordinance to- to state or tell officers to do something different. I don't- I guess I don't-
Murky at best on this, insofar as it authorizes the public sale- Murky at best on this, insofar as it authorizes the public sale of marijuana and for certain citizens to be able to possess small amounts of it without making a carve-out for them. I, I think this actually brings clarity to our police procedures. I think this is exactly the forum to be advancing this. Again, we have buy-in from our chief of police, we have it reviewed by our solicitor. And the language specifically is drawn from other municipalities and boroughs in Pennsylvania. We are not taking the maiden voyage on this path. This is smart policy, and I think the only thing that boroughs like ours can do to try to frankly address the gaps in state law.
Well, I personally don't care what other places have done. If this is, if this is the improper vehicle and it's not legal, then it's not legal. I don't see how this is, I don't know what we're doing with this. We're passing an ordinance that's not really an ordinance, we're just, we're making a statement apparently about police procedures, it seems like that you should do that in the police manual. If state law gives you that, gives you that, you know, gives you that discretion, and it doesn't seem like state law gives you that discretion. I don't care what, how unfair you think state law is, we're just a borough, we can't override state law. And if you want to change state law, contact your state rep, I guess. But I'm not gonna beat this horse anymore. If someone has a motion on this about advertising, that's fine.
I moved that motion, or I'm sorry, I moved to advertise the ordinance as is at council's next regular meeting.
Are you sure you want to move it as is and not with the changes that were suggested, Ryan?
Okay, just for suggested specifically, sorry, we got into it there.
They shall.
Specifically kind of what Tara said.
You want it for another two weeks, then?
Yeah, specifically what Tara said about, you know, crafting more of a statement and purpose, and perhaps actually restructuring the ordinance to put the Section 4 language nearer the top. You know, to emphasize officer discretion. I think I captured those accurately.
Ryan, I don't think putting this off for a couple of weeks is gonna, to hurt it. So I would think that we might be better off in making the changes and then advert, reading and advertising it next meeting.
For the record, I'm pretty comfortable with it the way it is, but, you know, we're on a council for a reason, so it's fine with me. Let's table it and come back to it next time.
All right, Mr. O'Donnell, did you then, I guess, withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask one just random question? What is this, for this ordinance or any ordinance, how does this apply to medical marijuana if someone actually has a medical card? Is that, like, this doesn't matter, this doesn't count then? Or does that supersede state law or not supersede state law?
Yeah, so medical marijuana is, if you, if you are, if you have a card and you are a user and you are found to be in possession of any medical marijuana, you're basically exempt. You're, you're, you're not covered under, under state criminal code.
Which, which I think is one of the reasons that Ryan was interested in this, because it seems as though if you have the money, you can get a card. So the, you're looking at a more equal enforcement of a law rather than, you know, punishing one sector that may not be able to, as Ryan said, may not be able to afford to get the card.
Yeah, I think that's, it's a very fair statement.
It kind of makes a joke out of the entire idea of having a card. You're supposed to, people with medical marijuana cards are supposed to actually have some sort of medical condition. I mean, I guess, I mean, everyone knows that's a joke when you say it, but as opposed to the individual with a small amount who does not have a card, who's just using it for recreational purposes.
Well, he may not be using it for recreational purposes, though, either.
I don't know if we have the, I can understand how that's, can be perceived, that there's a, there's a certain unfairness in that, in that law perhaps, but I don't know if small, I don't know if municipalities have the power to deal with that. But, okay, I'm using my discretion to declare that subject over until next time. And we're gonna move on to the police report. Is Mayor Wilson still not here?
I believe that's the case.
Mr. Zorcheck, do you know anything about what's going on with police?
As of now, the department is healthy. A majority of the department has received their first round of vaccine. There aren't any major equipment breakdowns or mechanical issues that they're dealing with. So the department's doing quite well at the moment.
Excellent. Public Safety, Mr. Fuller.
Public Safety did not meet.
Community Development, Mr. Bright.
Did not meet.
Public Works, Mr. Love.
Public Works did not meet.
Thank you. Community Services, Ms. Yeney.
Community Services did not meet.
Personnel, Dr. Patrol.
Personnel did not meet.
Okay, and finally Pension, Mr. Fuller.
Pension Committee did not meet either, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, Connect, Mr. Zorcheck.
Sure, thank you. On the Connect slate, there are a number of subcommittee working group meetings that are scheduled over the next few weeks. Mostly dealing with the first greenhouse gas inventory report that was authored by a group of GSPAs students. That, that, that will, that review will be discussed at length, I believe, this coming Thursday. To see if, one, recommendations from that report can be implemented, and two, how larger bodies can act as a whole could look at undertaking a second greenhouse gas inventory for municipal operations. And I do believe that is everything I have to report on Connect. Tara, am I missing anything?
No, I am planning to go on Thursday if you guys aren't.
Fantastic. I will try my best, but I will, I will coordinate with you on that.
All right, Burrows listed a report. Thank you. Burrows listed a report, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a matter that Mr. Zorcheck and I would like to discuss with Borough Council in Executive Session this evening. It won't take too long. The purpose of the Executive Session is to receive advice from your solicitor.
Thank you. Borough Manager Report, Mrs. Zorcheck.
Thank you. I will also be brief tonight, as Tim mentioned, we do have a matter to discuss in Executive Session. Secondly, and most importantly, just wanted to let all of council know, as you have been undoubtedly been looking out your windows and or nursing your aching backs, winter has been taking a toll on us. We have, unlike past winters, we are quickly approaching the utilization of all of our anticipated rock salt order for 2021. Our bin right now is still about half full, which leaves us between about 300 and 400 ton, which is ample supply. However, as I said, we've also been replenishing that on almost every two to three day basis. We're ordering in another, you know, 40 to 80 tons. We budgeted $16,000, give or take a few dollars this year for salt. We have 12,000 of that already consumed. The supplier, our contract with our supplier Cargill generally, or usually, I'm sorry, usually imposes an additional surcharge once we surpass 125% of our projected allocation for the year. The supplier has generously agreed to waive that provision, so they will not be applying a surcharge should we exceed 125% of our allocation. There is a provision that allows them to assess a surcharge once we reach 150% of our projection. I certainly hope that we do not reach that. Like I said, we are, you know, our crews are doing, although they are doing a very good job maintaining our streets, they are also conserving salt where they can and being cognizant of the fact that it seems like every other day we're getting another round of, you know, one to three inches of snow. So we're gonna do our very best to control product where we can. Also understanding that, you know, the calendar year is the calendar year, and we may have to throw salt in November and December. So we don't want our bin to be completely empty as we move into those months. But there is the very likely, likely possibility that we may be a few thousand dollars over budget this year on our rock salt purchasing. But rest assured, there will be salt. Our supplier agreement stipulates, no matter the surcharge, the supplier must continue to deliver salt. So if we need to consume 600 tons, they will bring it. We won't run out, but we will just pay for it. Outside of that, Public Works overtime right now, we're sitting at approximately about 55% of our budgeted overtime consumed so far, which isn't bad. The last, unfortunately, we tend to be getting snow on the weekends and overnights when we don't have crews staffed. So I'm not overly concerned about that number yet. Because again, we can control callouts if need be. And it, like I said, we're not nearly as up against our threshold as we are with the salt. You know, and that's, that's been running, you know, so we had a long weekend where we had to bring four people out to address the situation over the weekend. You know, moving forward, I've also instructed our department head to be cognizant of those callouts, seeing if he can, you know, control the number of guys he brings out without creating an unsafe situation. So we'll, we'll watch that one closely and try to stay on top of the overtime. But fortunately, we're sort of the whim of mother nature here. And we also need to keep our streets clear.
I'd like to say they do a great job.
I would certainly second that. You have a very dedicated group of guys, and, you know, they, they're always, they're always on top of everything. So, and they've, they've definitely earned every nickel through overtime this winter, that's for sure.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zorcheck. New business? Anyone have any new business?
Cassandra, did you have a report from the Edgewood Foundation?
Um, I didn't, except that we do have, I did want to mention that we do have one seat open that we'll be advertising in the next newsletter, but we do have about four people interested in the opening. But that's all I have to report.
I just didn't want to.
Thank you. I can't see, so I forgot she was there, apologize. Thank you for coming and giving us the information. All right, Committee Action, Oakview Retaining Wall Contract Award, I guess, Mr. Love.
I move to award the Oakview Avenue Retaining Wall Remediation Project to J.G. Contracting Company, Inc., the low bidder, in the amount of $146,003, which includes parking lot surface restoration.
Second.
Give a second. Does anyone have any questions on this? I think we've talked about this a lot. Hearing none, Mr. Zorcheck, please call the roll.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Bright.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Dr. Patrol.
Hi.
Ms. Yeney. And Mr. Wainwright.
Hi, and the motion passes. Resolution 2021-07, crossing guard wages. Mr. Chairman of Public, Public Safety, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Borough of Edgewood, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, Resolution 2021-07. Whereas the Borough of Edgewood has approved the budget for 2021 fiscal year, and whereas the Borough of Edgewood has established the 2021 wages for crossing guards, now therefore be resolved that the Edgewood Borough Council hereby authorizes wages for fiscal year 2021 for those employees listed below. Sue Pollock, $18 an hour, and David Boslett, $18 an hour. Adopted this 16th day of February 2021 by the Council of Borough of Edgewood.
Second.
There are seconds. Mr. Zorcheck, please call the roll.
Mr. Bright.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Patrol.
Hi.
Ms. Yeney.
Hi.
Mr. Wainwright.
Hi, and the resolution passes. All right, we are now gonna head into Executive Session for the reasons stated earlier by the solicitor. There will be no action afterwards.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right. This is council president, we have just come out of Executive Session. For the purpose of the solicitor gave us council legal advice with respect to a zoning issue. No action will be taken. Mr. Fuller, do you have some sort of motion for us?
I believe I would like to move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, everybody.